Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 26, 2025 work session of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberally and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke here.
Burton.
Burton here.
Canauer.
Canauer here.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Weisar.
Weisar here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Prinzing.
Prinzing here.
Ferygno here.
Okay, we have minutes from the June 12 meeting. They came in late today. Did everybody get a chance to review them? Or do we want to put this approval off till the next meeting? It's up to...I know I had a chance.
I had an opportunity to review. Unless somebody objects, I'll move to approve the minutes.
Okay. Any second or?
I took a look at them, too, so.
Okay. Can I get a second?
A second?
All right.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canauer.
Canauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Doug, would you like to go through our tabled items?
Okay. So I'll actually put it to the board here real quick. We have...so the applicants for our tabled applications are not in the audience, but we do have a new business item, and they are in the audience. If you'd like to start with the new business item, we can get them on their way, and then move into the tabled applications.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure thing.
Justin and Dave want to come up? So our new business item is Arbers of Penfield signage. So back in 2021, 2022, when we were reviewing the overall and Phase 1 for the development, the board had gone back and forth with the applicants and with the architectural consultant on signage. And in this case, they were looking...there was some discussion on having some monument signage or some architectural feature at the entrance to the development, both to...
Pavilion.
Yeah, so they ultimately settled on a pavilion with signage attached to it that would both identify the development and add some architectural interest along the pedestrian trail. So they're back to modify that. They're looking to change it out to a more traditional freestanding monument sign or ground-mounted monument sign, and I'll let them discuss more about it.
Excuse me one minute. Matt, can you put the original one and this one side by side on the screen, please? Sorry, guys, go ahead.
You're fine.
Yep, I'll wait for you guys to put those. So we had...my name's Justin Miranda with Whitestone Development. Do you need my address or any of that stuff?
I mean, office address or something.
Yeah, sure. 1080 Pittsburgh Victor Road. Represent the ownership.
My name is Dave Spalletta with Spalletta Construction. Our office, 7 Van Aucker Street, Rochester, obviously.
So we're here today to go over the signage, monument signage for the Arbers of Penfield. We're here today to present a new design for the roadside at the main entrances. As you've kind of gone through this for probably a number of years, this project has evolved over and over again. It was originally supposed to be the entire piece. Then it was Phase 1, then Phase 2, Phase through 5. Obviously, there's a lot of significant costs associated with this project. And as we got into it more and more, we've run into a number of things, such as RGA and other things that we've taken into consideration. And while we phased this thing, this project down, we've built the first 111 units. We have a number of features that still have to come along with the large pavilion in the back, pickleball courts, all sorts of other items. So basically, this project really is a front-loaded project where we have some financial constraints that we're working with, signage being one of them. We want to...we went through extensive research with the ownership on this one and what they wanted to see at the frontage of the...at the complex, at the two things. So we really wanted to bring some light to what the Arbers is. This is a beautiful structure here, and I know there's a number of things that we're going to be planning on for later when we get to the entirety of this project, if that makes sense. You've got structures throughout the pathways. But this was a cost-effective solution and a very, what we felt, elegant solution to the frontage while we go through and continue down this road of building out this project. So we are at the first...we call it 1A Phase, which is 111 units. We've started the next 11 units. We're working on financing for another portion of one. And then we're also have...down the road, we're probably about a few years away from finishing off what we consider Phase 1. Phase 2 is another one that we're coming up with with a lot of significant costs coming with RGA and everything else. I'm kind of a little all over the place, but what I'm trying to establish is we want to get some signage at the frontage, and there's still a lot of development that has to happen before we get to a lot of these other structures. And we feel this is a very, very, I would say, elegant way to do that.
So are you suggesting that trying to save money today and this would be a potentially temporary solution? And you build this pavilion after the fact and once things are up and running and leased up? Or are you suggesting that this would be a permanent solution? You'd never built the pavilion? What's the...I'm not sure what you're actually asking.
So what I'm suggesting is these would be permanent fixtures at the road sides, those two roadway entrances, so we do get that notification or people can see that, yes, this is the Arbers of Penfield. We do...this would be something that would be coming after the fact once we build out this entire project. So we've got a number of features that have to come later just because, like you said, we've got to get people in, we've got to get rented up. We are incurring a...this is a very expensive project.
How...just to curiosity, how have...how's the interest been with rents and prospective tenants?
Yeah, we're off to a very good start.
Because people are already living there.
Correct. We've rented...we have about 24 people lived in there or 24 units occupied. We have 32 that are in the future that are coming on. We have the A Building hopefully coming next week. That will open up the rest of the 111 units for this Phase 1A. We've gotten...
Is Clubhouse open?
Clubhouse is open as well. We've got some features that we are finishing out there, but it is open. The exercise room, we had a few of the guys there today, very proud, and it's pretty impressive. So we're getting good leasing traction right now. If the rates and construction prices could be a little more cooperative, you know, back on my construction guy to the left of me. But, you know, one of the other real things that we're dealing with, too, is I keep saying RGA, that's been a huge, huge cost. Huge hurdle and cost. And right now, we have power for just Phase 1. We are still trying to work out solutions for Phase 2 and the rest of the project. As I assume you guys are dealing a lot with RGA for everything else going on here in Penfield, so I'll leave that one alone. But we have...we are getting very good leasing velocity at this point, and the pool just opened.
Would this be...are these like channel letters that would be internally illuminated?
Yes, yeah, the signage would be...they're double-sided, and they would be, yes, LED backlight.
Modules inside the channels.
And this is McHale signs that designed it for us, all in your rulebook.
And the color of the light would be white?
I believe so, yes. It would be white. The stone veneer is cut cobblestone, which matches the high-density buildings, just so it all kind of blends aesthetically. But yes. I would imagine it'd be white LED lighting, yeah.
Do you know whether it'd be warm or cool? Or is it too?
I think it's just really preference. I think it could be anything.
Is there a preference by the town?
Is there a preference by the town?
I don't know. I'm thinking about the brown tones on the stone. Warmer might be better, but I don't...I'm...
Yeah, we'll incorporate that.
Not coming down on one side of the line or not on that. I'd like to ask the other members what their thoughts are on this.
Just what I confirm, two signs you're going to have eventually, two on 250.
Oh, one on 250 and one on the Atlantic.
So the two main entry ones. So on the westerns...or the southern side on Atlantic Avenue, it'll be on the 250 side, has a divided median. It would be in the divided median.
In the median.
The south side on Atlantic Avenue doesn't have a median anymore. I believe that was a fire marshal discussion.
Would have been a little tight.
It would be on the west side, right there, of the entrance.
Will it provide an issue with site distance?
Both of them are set pretty far back.
Okay.
Outside of the right-of-way.
And we connected with Andy Savage to make sure we were in line with everything that's required.
Okay. Thoughts, rest of the board?
I'm good.
The location of the future structures, would those remain in the same location as was originally planned?
Yeah, at this time, yes.
And is that a five-phase project?
Depends on who you're talking to. So originally, it was a...we've phased it out in a number of ways. If you've got a better handle on financing, it's quite the challenge. So Phase 1 right now was supposed to be 232 units.
Okay.
So that's approved, and that's what we're working on, and that's what we have power for. So we've internally done what we could, you know, finance. We've done the 111 units. We're actually doing these next 11 units out of cash. And then we're working on financing for another portion of it. And so it's...we have phases within phases, I guess.
Okay, so I think...
So this is going to be a long-term...
Yeah, I'm probably thinking back when the original plans were put in, how it was phased, but I understand that's kind of changing the way you guys...
So when we originally reviewed it, it was six phases, including the east side of 250. We originally approved the overall in Phase 1. They combined all of the future phases into a Phase 2, so they have final approval for the full development. And on the town side, we're really looking at the phasing as in terms of number of occupiable units, because that's where our metrics are for re-review. So every 200 CFOs, they have to go back, have a conversation with DOT, and implement new mitigations.
So the parcel that's on the east of 250, would that be the last phase?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you say that you would put in these structures when all the phases were completed or everything to the west of 250?
It would be more on the west of 250.
Okay.
So it's part of the integral of that whole section.
Okay.
And I know there's other things going on with the other...
So you're not considering building these monument signs until the end? Or you're building the monument signs now?
We're doing the monument signs now. So we need to get some...obviously, some traction and some notice to the...
Sure.
But the other portion, along with the other features, that's going to be part of our future phases.
Okay.
So such as like pickleball court and the big pavilion in the back and the playground.
Yeah, I mean, there is and has always been a concern that, you know, this is Ralph's, like, lifelong dream kind of thing. And he worked really hard on it.
Oh, yeah.
And...
Bob definitely shares the same sentiments, and he is...I mean, this is by far...for me and my career, this is amazing. This...somebody gentleman came and saw today just the beginning process of that clubhouse and the upcoming things that are going to be there. And actually, just ran into a few of the tenant or people that live there now. It's amazing.
So they like it so far?
Oh, yeah.
So the last phase on the west side would be the northmost area? Is that what you anticipate?
Correct.
So the single-family in that cul-de-sac or that high sort of...
Yeah, you've got the half-circle kind of thing going on. But it's a combination of...there are some larger buildings there as well. It's, again, it's going to be a lot of economics and financing and how you go to the next portion of it.
Yeah, I just don't want to lose that, you know, architecture and those in the project.
Yeah, we don't...
And I think having them as early between phases as possible, maybe... And I can understand, you know, your guys' position, maybe in that last construction phase as a proposal, you know, where the single families are done, that last section before it gets totally built out on the west side, that that be part of the final construction phase.
Oh, but putting in all the...
Before you go to the other side of the road?
Yeah.
That's something we can write into an approval letter.
I'm sorry?
So that's something that we can write into an approval letter if you'd like.
Okay.
So...
If that makes sense.
I'm pretty strongly opposed to this application. You know, the years and years that we worked with Ralph and his design team and the really significant public participation in this process, you know, culminating with this as part of the community identity, it seems sacrilegious almost to lose this in favor of just another stone monument with a name on it that looks like every other subdivision, when this is not every other subdivision. I mean, this has been touted as the foremost exemplary mixed-use development in New York. And I, for one, am not in favor of this change at all.
So we're not proposing to ditch it, lose it. This is in addition to it.
Oh, I didn't hear that in your presentation.
No, so basically, this is what you were just alluding to, right? So that these need to be a part of...the structures need to be a part of before you hop over to the other side of the road?
Certainly before you hop over to the other side. And then just from what Jim was saying.
Yep.
So does Phase 1 incorporate development around the road that goes out to 250?
No, that's part of...in our original, that was part of Phase 2 or Phase 1A.
Phase 2. So one of these is by the Atlantic Ave entrance, and the other is by...
Correct.
The 250 entrance.
The 250. So...
So you kind of left signless with a...
Well, I can understand the temporary, you know, call it a temporary sign, but maybe pull in the schedule so before you start Phase 2, Phase 1 at least has the one structure built. And then when you...I assume that second entrance on 250 is maybe Phase 2, that a completion of Phase 2, then that structure be put in. In other words, for those phases that incorporate those structures, we don't call it complete until they're there.
So I think that's what Doug was saying, so incorporate that into your Phase 2 requirements, because that's where this comes online, these structures, right?
So what's the benefit to you guys in adding... in adding additional...this is not a cheap sign.
No, but this is what the ownership wants.
To construct.
Correct.
So you're really adding to the cost of the development, you know? And one of my concerns here is, you know, the cost of the utilities continues to grow and construction costs and, you know, lease agreements are hard to come by. And then somebody's going to come back here again and say, oh, we can't... We don't want to do that anymore. We already have a sign in place, and it was approved, and, you know...
I personally look at that as more of a feature, those structures.
Well, I disagree with you, sir. The other ones are features. This is a monument sign.
Gotcha. Understood.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. You both might be saying the same thing.
I think we're saying the same thing, too.
Because you're looking at the pavilion structure as a feature.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, they're saying the same thing.
Yes. I agree with you.
And the monument sign...so really, what you're asking is to...correct me if I'm wrong, delay the construction of the pavilions until a later date when cash flow's there or whatever.
Yep.
And put these monument signs up now.
Correct.
So that you can get...people know what it is and...
Exposure.
Sense of place and so on and so forth.
So you're looking for some branding.
Exactly.
Clean up the entrances, get some landscaping out there, get a sign that shows people that you're alive.
I don't want to speak for him, but yes.
No, you are 100% there. I mean, you said it just a second ago about the premier place to live. And right now, how it's...we need to clean up the front, and we need to get some attraction there. Once you get inside there, I know a few guys have all drove through that thing, it's amazing. But this is what we're trying to do, clean it up. So this is...it truly is an in addition.
So timing-wise, you know, I... Because you're...whether you're borrowing money or using cash, you guys are funding this.
Correct.
So I don't want to tie the construction of these to a certain number of units or a certain amount of absorption, because you can always just pull back and go, wow, you know, if we build that next building, then we're going to have to build the pavilion. So, you know, let's hold off.
Or it's like DOT movements.
I would be much more comfortable in tying this to some other milestone or, you know...
So at least for one of the pavilions, I mean, the one at Atlantic, they are working in that area. The one on 250, that was already going to be part of a later phase. They're not doing construction in that area.
And I'd be...
So the trail hasn't been completed over in that section anyway. The trail right now, I believe, ends at the Atlantic entrance, on the west side of the Atlantic entrance. And it'll move east as that section starts to come onto the line.
So right now, it's on the west side of the property, going along the south side to the western side of the Atlantic entrance.
So this is...this image is from, you know, two months ago. And so that's the extent of the trails there on the western boundary along...
The tree line.
The tree line. And then it's on the south side up to the entrance to Atlantic. But that section on the other side isn't coming online until the second half of Phase 1. And the one on 250 isn't until Phase 2. That was part of the original Phase 2 review.
Okay.
So you have something that you might offer the town in terms of, you know, a date that... a milestone? I mean, date is stretching, I realize, but, you know...
I kind of like how Doug was saying that as part of Phase 2.
Yeah, attach it to the phases. So prior to being able to start Phase 2, they'll have to finish the one on Atlantic. Prior to finishing Phase...yeah, prior to finishing Phase 1B, they'll have to finish the one on Atlantic. Prior to finishing Phase 2, they'd have to finish the one on 250. So they have to be constructed essentially with the phase that's being built out at the time?
Correct. Or you won't give us permits.
So at some point, these would coexist?
Correct.
Okay.
And we think that, obviously, pulling the brick and everything from the buildings and incorporate that, I think gives us some pop.
Do we have any information from you guys on how you're going to landscape or hardscape around this?
I don't know. They're set on trench footings, but...
As far as landscaping around, I don't know if we've finalized that.
I don't know. I don't think we finalized just yet landscaping around monument signage, but...
It would be low-level, but we can put something together and get it over to you.
Definitely.
That'd be great.
Does that modify your position?
It does.
Okay. Terry, any other comments on it?
No, I'm good with it.
You good with it? Okay. It sounds like we're all pretty much consensus on this. So the...we would approve these and then have the Atlantic Pavilion built at the end of Phase 1, prior to the beginning of Phase 2?
Yep.
And then the 250?
Is part of Phase 2.
Part of...end of Phase 2?
Yep.
Prior to Phase 3? Okay, somebody want to make that motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I'll follow up shortly with an approval letter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
By all means, come take a look, and we'll take you for a tour. Very proud.
Love to.
Take care.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Have a good fourth. Okay.
All right, getting back to tabled applications, tabled application.
Number one?
Number one, or...yeah, let's...yeah, number one. We'll move into Chick-fil-A. We have no new information and no new updates. I believe it's currently going to be on the docket at the August zoning board public hearing.
August or July?
I thought it was next week.
I believe it's August, but I can check with Andy Sevegas to double-check.
All right, maybe. It could be, but less I heard.
Okay. So I'll double-check. At this point, they're tabled before us. We have submitted no information, so no actions necessary by the board at this time.
Okay.
Tabled application number two. The Northrop Penfield Solar application. So we sent out...at the end of the public hearing, the board requested we just send out a tabling resolution, tabling it to this meeting for further discussion. Since that meeting, we haven't received any revised plans or responses to comments. We have been in discussion with the applicant. They have sent out some preliminary information. They're looking for some more information from staff side, so I'll be...we'll be sharing that to you as we get more from them. I believe they're going to be sending me information on their potential community engagement plan. When we have that information, I'll share it with the board.
Okay.
Staff has drafted a resolution that incorporates the comments from the board, the comments from the public during the public hearing, and staff comments. If you want to go through it, we can discuss further and change, modify, edit any conditions or request for information.
I'd like to kind of see it in writing.
It should be in your packet, and it was on the drop.
I just went through it. I didn't see it, and I didn't see it earlier when I looked. No, no, I have the list of documents, but...
Maybe I have yours.
It's that, right?
Yeah, it's the first one after the agenda drop.
Oh, this one here.
Yeah.
So Underground Utilities. Maybe do a lightning-fast verbal highlight of these points.
Okay.
And then we'll see if we want to add any additional points.
Okay. So first one, we request...
Feasibility of Utilities Underground.
Feasibility of Utilities Underground, moving it back, whether RGA would be supportive and to provide any correspondence they have with RGA regarding that. They stated during the public hearing that they were conducting a glare study. The board requests the results of the study be provided for its review.
So the glare study is to determine whether sun glare is going to affect neighbors?
Adjacent properties, correct.
Yep.
You know, look for that for review and potential mitigation. Likewise, they stated during the public hearing they were conducting a noise generation study. We requested the board... We requested the, board requested they be provided the study for its review. Additionally, requested additional information on sound generation during panel movements from the inverters and from other electrical.
I wanna, Bob, since you have a lot more experience than the rest of us with solar panels. Back to the glare, in your experience, I mean, obviously, they're made to absorb versus reflect.
Right.
But there is still reflection. And the angle of incident, angle of incidence equals the angle of reflection. But if you have panels that are following the sun, are they trying to be as close to 90 degrees from the sun as possible?
Yes.
And do they, let's say it's sunrise and sunset. That potentially would be the, potentially, the points of highest glare, other than the sun is dimmer, right? But from a, if you're a house or a pedestrian or something standing on the ground and you're trying to avoid reflected glare in your eyes. The angle of these panels and the, where the sun is hitting them and where you're standing.
I think probably aren't gonna get reflection if you're standing at ground level. It's hard to say for an elevation like a second story.
Right.
Where that angle might be.
Okay.
Yeah, but at, at ground level, I haven't experienced, you know, from roadways, cars driving by. It's not like, it's not like that one crazy car that's in front of you that has this funny bumper and you're, you know.
Yeah, and I would imagine, I mean, is there a point in that rotation throughout the day that it makes no sense? Like, costs more to move them than they're absorbing from the sun at that point?
No, they will try to keep perpendicular to the sun. And it's not sensing the sun, it's programmed in by your location, time of year, that sort of thing. So, what they're proposing here, they're single axis rotation, so it's an east to west rotation. So I'd have to go back and look at how the site plan is.
But they're gonna be on an axis that also faces probably a little bit south, right? Or they wouldn't be completely perpendicular, they'd be, I would think they'd go like this.
They track, in this part of the country, they track east to west.
Completely, so.
Yeah, so if this is your.
Instead of that, they're, they're like this, not like this?
Correct.
Going south, no?
No.
Really?
No. Now, if you have a two-axis tracker, then it will absolute follow the sun on both axes. But like the one on, that the water department did near county line in East Penfield, that's a single-axis tracker. So that tracks east-west. And that's what they're proposing for here.
So the panels are essentially parallel to the ground?
Correct.
And just tracking east-west?
Now, the, the other project, it's a, it's a fixed array, and they said that's because of the terrain. So that's gonna have an angle of probably 30 degrees, but those are gonna face due south, because it's not a track.
Right. Okay.
So, the tracking one, if there is any glare, it could change, you know, obviously during the day as it's sweeping through. And the sun is moving. And actually, with the sun moving, it's gonna be the same thing with the other ray.
Yeah, yeah, it would move.
Yeah.
Just like when the sun comes in your house, in a window, it hits walls at different places at different times.
But like the applicant pointed out, you know, it's got a finish on it that wants to absorb. So it's not like, you know, it's not gonna be like even a glazed window kinda reflection. It's gonna be subdued from, you know, that. Yeah.
So those, those solar farms that are popping up all over the southern tier, where it, it's a very hilly region. So there was an industry study done of the anti-glare film that's applied to these PV panels. Because in many of these cases, you know, truckers are coming over a hill and they might be 60 feet above. You know, these, and these are much, these are, you know, 24, 25 megawatt fields, much larger than we're talking about here. So they had to ensure that the, the reflection and reflection from these panels wasn't gonna blind the, the truckers coming over the hill. And I, if I, if I dig, I might be able to find that study, but it, you know, I mean, we asked them.
Yeah, I mean, I think these guys should provide one, but if we can get that other study, that'd be great.
It's a, it's not just something that affects us here, it affects, you know, the people all over the world. They've, they've, they've kind of, they've kind of perfected that.
Yeah, and I could, I recognize this, this is the water department's.
Okay, I didn't mean to. Go down that rabbit hole, but, yeah, well, you know what, I did, because it is, it's important.
It's important, important discussion. So, the next one was about noise generation. They did provide the inverter specs. The inverter spec does have a audible noise specification. It's less than 65 decibels at one meter on sort of an average day. Having a sound, sound study.
So, just as, what's ambient environment in the suburbs, like 80?
They said, so they, they did, there's a.
No, just normal, like if we walked outside, outside the town hall at three in the afternoon, what's the ambient noise typically?
So 65, they say, is like a normal conversation, or the sound generated inside your car at 60. But that's, some cars are better and more insulated than others, that's not a great reference point.
Changes drastically.
But it changes drastically as you get farther away and.
Yeah, inverse square law.
Yes, and audible noise decibel range is logarithmic, so a 10 decibel increase is a doubling. So 65 is considered nor, normal conversation level, like, probably a little louder than this, but about this at three feet next to the inverter. I believe the closest distance from an inverter to a property line is a little over 100 feet.
Okay.
I gave you a, a copy of that one study, remember for the, the dog?
Yes.
Please?
Yes. I can send that around again.
It, it's a different noise, but it had some interesting information about how sound dissipates.
So they have other sites? And probably similar types of equipment, same brand, type of inverter?
Yeah, so I think they were, in my conversation, they, they were looking for similar sites with similar equipment. So I think they're trying to find some newer ones that they've been doing, 'cause I know they have, they went out in like the town of Parma. But I know that one's six or seven years old now, so I'm assuming this equipment's.
Yeah, the inverters would be different, the panels would be different.
Inverters are different, panels are different, so they're looking, so trying to find one that's nearby. Because they did suggest one to me, but it was, it's like 45 minutes away.
Where?
Huron, even?
Huron or North Rose.
Okay.
So it's out east of Sodis.
Yep.
But I believe that one was completed in like 2023 or 2024. So it's a relatively recent one.
Okay.
And I, I don't know why this is, I, I understand the question. I think the question came from the audience.
Yeah.
But I don't know why this is important. If somebody came to us and they were a startup. There's certainly a lot of industry information about small community solar projects that shouldn't be a.
I mean, from a noise standpoint?
Major factor, from any standpoint, you know, whether they have other projects or not is.
Right. No, I was just trying to make a comparison in terms of, well, it's a type of thing that if there's a claim that there's noise or no noise. If there's a solar farm somewhere nearby with similar equipment, easiest thing, you know, we're trying to get a handle on, well, what is 60 decibels? What's it like? Well, go out and visit it and see how close you have to get before you hear it, right? Good? And that, that is an actual possibility that we could do that?
Yes, that, that's why they were gonna try to find a couple of other sites that they could set up times that landowners would be open to having visitors.
Okay.
The, the inverters that are used in the town site have fans in them. So obviously, in the spec sheet for that, there's a spec associated with noise and distance.
Yep, I could take a look at.
So, you know, right in our backyard, we could see.
So are those located closer or as close to neighboring homes as any of these? Have we gotten any complaints?
That one development?
So that, that does back up to Newberry Park.
Is that, is that bermed, or is it just in the front?
Yeah, the berm is on the west side.
Okay.
But I don't know where the inverter location, I'd have to, I think it's the white box there behind the house.
Right there?
That's the switchgear and the transformer. The inverters are under each row.
Okay.
So there's, the inverters are distributed throughout the array.
Okay, I could see if I could find the, our equipment specifications when we did that one. 'Cause that's another easy one if you, to, to visit and see how loud they are compared to what the equipment spec says.
Yeah, there they are, right there.
Okay.
So those are actually facing, well, that's the park.
It's the backside of the highway department.
There's a house there, yeah.
Yep.
Doug, how many of these do we have in our, our town right now?
Solar farm?
Yeah, solar farm.
Three.
Three?
So we have ours, and then Water Authority has one over in East Penfield, off of Watson-Hulbert Penfield. And the county has one on the former landfill off of Kennedy Road.
You're upside down.
That's right, east is west and west is east. So Kennedy Road.
North is south and south is north.
Yep, right there, on the former county landfill of Kennedy.
So we're gonna have five now if these get approved.
Correct.
Do we need more guidelines from the town maybe to set the standards for these? I mean, do we see we're going in that direction down the road?
We just amended the code.
The town just amended the code for renewable energy systems. So we have a pretty lengthy, I think I gave you a copy, it's also on the town's E-code on the website. So that leads into the next one. We just asked for other sites within greater Rochester area that are owned and operated by Green Spark. So I know they're working on that based on my discussions with them. When they provide us some sites, I'll forward it onto the board. This was a resident concern, considering providing additional screening along the western property boundary. Providing a year-round visual sound buffering through native or naturalized vegetation. I know they initially, I think they proposed some arborivides. I believe we've sent this off to Bruce for his review, and we have received comments back.
Deer nectar. Deer nectar.
Yeah, oh yeah, arborivides is deer nectar. And I think that was his primary concern, was arborivides are. So the next one, it was, they sort of mentioned, we had some discussion at the public hearing on what was going to be vegetated underneath the solar panels or in around the solar panels. They mentioned a fuzz and buzz seed mix at the public hearing. We requested additional, or added, requesting additional information on fuzz and buzz, as well as whether they can provide any other information regarding the site's viability for agrivoltaics. Or, I mean, the fuzz and buzz really will be a pollinator, but either is agrivoltaics or pollinator. Fruiting the word for it, but pollinator location.
So, let me ask you a question. Why are, why are we asking them, I, again, I understand this came from, from one of the residents, but why are we asking them to provide the ability to, to serve these other purposes when it's not part of the town code?
Potentially just because it's a good thing?
For, just for wording purposes, you wanna say, you know, would the applicant consider?
Yep, I can change that to consider.
Agri-voltaic, you know, blah, 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 or something like that. But I, I don't think we should be telling them that they have to provide us information about being able to do this. That would be more than what we would require of any other applicant.
Yep, I can change the language on that.
I think the same thing holds true for this alternative layout, because, you know, the, the layout for these things, as Bob can attest, there's a, there's a function.
Right.
Where the inverters are and.
Yeah, easy access for maintenance.
How they get fed into, in each inverter can handle a certain number of, of panels. And if it, if they provide the buffering that, you know, is satisfactory to the board and to the community, then where they put the inverters is kinda secondary.
I would agree with that.
I think we should be asking them to do that.
Yeah, I think that, that one point, I don't think the inverters is an issue. I think that was, that comment was referring to the, the step-up transformer, the pad transformer.
The pad transformer?
Being, 'cause that's kind of away from the array, it's between the array and the poles. Or the underground goes from the transformer to the poles.
But again, if we, if they provide buffering.
If they provide buffering around it, I mean, it's.
Relocating that, you know, to serve some kind of redundant visual barrier is kind of a burden to me.
Yeah, it's, those things are typically green and it's not that much different than a pad transformer in a development.
Yeah, and we've seen them a million times and, and, and many developers, you know, puts.
Well, everybody complains about that box in their front yard.
Yep, but if they, if they put some vegetation around it.
Totally, totally opposed to this box and then.
Three, four years later, you don't notice.
Nobody ever notices them. You just don't notice them.
And, and the same thing with this expected performance. If, if they're pro forma works, why are we challenging them about how efficient their design is?
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, strike that. All right, next comment is providing updated drainage plant, SWIP, and a stormwater management facility. I know that was a concern of engineering. So I'm gonna work with engineering to word that appropriately to get what they need for their review.
Sure.
To satisfy town drainage and EPA requirements.
So, you know, here's a question. We, we put, again, left field question. We put all these like wind turbines in the middle of the lake. Why are they worried about wetlands here? Why can't they put solar things on wetlands? Freaking put all the wind turbines in the lake and the ocean and kill the whales and stuff.
D E C regulations on wetlands came out July, or January 1st?
I know you don't have the answer.
No, I don't.
This is more of a rhetorical question.
You can put, you can put an array on a brown field.
Next one was another one that I, I was just gonna point, I know Jim had brought up the community engagement and providing. up the community engagement and providing information on their community engagement strategy. They had, something they had discussed ahead of the public hearing and at the public hearing, but they didn't really have a great answer for.
Right.
At the time. So I was gonna include that in the resolution, just as something for them to provide, that they should provide.
Site illumination.
Site illumination. I think they said there, it was gonna be limited or no limit illumination, but providing whatever that will be would be helpful.
Right.
So, I, I meant to, I meant to send you a note about this. A lot of communities that are adopting, you know, new solar and, and energy storage standards require there to be a, a driveline with the ability to park two vehicles in the event of an emergency, and that there be a luminaire and a motion sensor. So, you know, something happens, you pull up, boom, you know, you've got a, you know, emergency response vehicle in the nighttime and, you know, you're illuminating that area. You can see that open the gate or, you know, what have you.
You could request them to do a Cobra light like we would with any standard intersection, just have where the driveway meets Plank Road, have them provide a luminaire there.
Yeah, I like the idea of the sensor on it, so it's not on all the time.
Sensor?
Yeah.
Because it's not designed to be used all the time. Just very infrequent, right? And probably.
Would you prefer it's.
Technically never at night, but in the case of an emergency or something, having it, having a luminaire on a, to provide some area illumination makes sense, as long as it's not on all the time.
The ones that, that we see in the office, you know, the, the main entryway is, is where the, the power pole exists to tie into the grid. So it's kind of a natural, you mount the light on the pole and put a.
Yeah.
Motion sensor in.
Okay.
Yeah, with LEDs today, the sensors are, you know, you're not waiting 10 minutes for a HID lamp to warm up and come up to full brightness, or boom, they're on.
Okay. Next one was providing, who will hold the funds for the decommissioning and responsibility of entities, either whether it's gonna be Green Spark that's holding the funds and funding the requirements of the decommissioning plan, or if it's going to be the Northrup One Solar LLC that holds the funds, just to ensure that if there is some issue, the decommissioning plan's being funded appropriately.
That the town's not stuck with.
Wouldn't they be providing that as part of the decommissioning plan?
Yep, but they don't identify, or at least I didn't see if they identified who will be holding the funds and, or who is responsible for the funds, whether that's going to be Green Spark or whether it's gonna be one of their entities.
Is it a, do they hold, is it actual funds or is it a bond, I don't remember, on the table?
Uh, we have different funding structures that they can choose from, bonding and letter of credit.
So either one, most of these communities that, that we work with, whether it's a letter of credit issued by a financial institution, but the bank, the, the community has the only access to that. Or if it's a bond, the community has the only access to that. It can't be revoked. So neither one of these entities should have, you know, control over the decommissioning fund at all.
I gotta look at the code on that. I haven't looked at it since the last meeting.
Yeah, I think my, my understanding is the concern was that if one entity, you know, declares bankruptcy, that they'd push it on to the other entity to say, it's not our responsibility, it's.
They issue a bond or a letter of credit.
If they issue a bond or a letter of credit, yeah.
Doesn't matter. And, and if they're no longer capable of maintaining the property and they don't sell it before they go belly up, then.
Yeah, exercise the.
Commission.
Town exercises the, the bond and they pay somebody to do what's gotta be done.
The next one was another resident concern. We added it in, just whether or not the informa, their equipment complies with FCC Part 15. Their, I know the, at least the inverter specifications and panel specifications they provided suggest that they are both compliant with those regulations, so.
Yeah, both, both NYSERDA and RGE need require that in the engineering information that's sent. And of course, it's way beyond FCC Part 15. It's, there's a bunch of UL requirements for disconnecting from the grid and so on and so forth. So that's really covered in the approval process through both NYSERDA and RGE.
Okay.
So I, I, I might suggest that instead of saying complain with FCC, we just say, complain with all state and federal regulations.
Yeah.
Medical.
All right, next one was the follow-up. So they did provide, and one of the reasons we did not have the public hearing in May is they were waiting on the DEC for jurisdictional determination pursuant to the new DEC regulations. That was kind of a new process for everybody. DEC came back with a positive jurisdiction letter. The others is requesting the applicant to continue to provide correspondence from New York State DEC regarding their permitting status, permitting status, because that is one item that has the potential to change the site layout, is what the DEC's ultimate determination is on the wetland delineation that they provide.
That goes back to my wind turbines in the lake comment.
Well, probably all the posts that the solar arrays sit on or can technically fill in the wetland, so that's probably why they don't allow it.
So they can replace it, right?
I think they allow that anyhow. I mean, most of these companies just use helical anchors. They don't disturb anything.
I agree. I don't know what the DEC's thought is, though.
If you knew that.
Yeah, I'd be millionaire.
Yes.
Okay. A normal PRC landscape consultant.
Yep, I did miss one earlier on. It's requesting the applicant to clarify the maximum height of the solar painters, panels, inverters, and other permanent equipment on site.
It was on their plan.
I, do you wanna say it was on the plan, but having them provide. I don't believe the inverter or other pad installations had a maximum height, but they did provide the height of the panels, which would be eight feet.
So there's, and there's back.
Yeah.
Yeah, somebody in the audience said something about that these things were gonna be, you know, 15 foot tall, and it's right on the plan. They're eight foot tall.
Yes. Any other additions we wanna make to this? Everybody good with us?
Did we cover the part about modeling second story visibility?
No, I can add that in.
Okay.
Wait, 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 wait. Why?
People were asking what the, what the view, I think it'd be interesting to see with.
I think there was a concern that the proposed buffering would be into, would not be significant enough to provide visual buffer from, since every home or almost every home that backs up is a two-story home.
Is that required?
I'd have to get into the minutia of our code. I don't believe.
I don't believe so.
We worded as such.
When we.
You know, I, listen, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to downplay concerns of, of any of the people that live in proximity to either one of these applications. But if we, if we weigh every application and who can see it and whether they find it objectionable or not, we're, we're in for a long haul.
There'd be no houses in Penfield.
It's similar to the, the kinds of discussions that we get into for cell towers. You know, can you see it? Do you find it objectionable? Does it distract you when you're driving down the road? And, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways that you can look at this, but.
Well, not just cell, really any, any development that we have.
Yeah.
I mean, two years ago, when we were approving these houses, people were complaining about the houses.
Yep, and you.
Now the people living in those houses are complaining about other things.
I just.
One resident made the comment that they'd rather have those back there than houses.
Right.
Yes.
Yep.
And, and, listen, everybody's entitled to their opinion and we should weigh these opinions. I just, I don't, this, putting this in here as an element of, you know, the tabling resolution, it just leaves us ripe for an argument.
So, so there is a provision in our code. This is, you know, under, well, it's, although it's, what, what tier is this?
Tier three.
Tier three.
So layout and screening shall be designed to minimize the views from neighboring properties to the greatest, greatest extent practicable.
So I think there's a basis to ask for.
Yep.
So practicable, yeah. So that's a, falls on you, Pete.
You know, I, I think back when Walmart was expanding.
Yeah.
In the houses there.
Yeah, they did the 3D fly-through and everything.
Yeah, that there be a buffer from second story, and that was just group stuff.
Well, actually, actually, they did it, if you remember, they did a model.
Oh, yeah.
With the camera from the second story of those apartments to the north to show what the view would be like.
And from the houses and everything.
Yep, I guess, I don't know, if, I would just.
It's a commercial.
I would just be curious what the significance would be of that with the distance and stuff. And with their proposed buffers, is it really like standing right out or is it kind of, you know?
Yeah, well, again, you're, okay, eight foot high and over the distance and with the buffer, can you see it, can you not?
You're never gonna get a buffer tall enough to shield this sea of solar panels from the view of the upper level of every house in proximity to this project.
Some will be better than others. The southern on the cul-de-sac, that is theory, that is a.
I don't know, and I, you know, I moved in, I had no trees in my yard, and I planted big trees and arborvitae, and I gave myself privacy and I gave my neighbors privacy.
So the houses that are there along the entire stretch on that east, on the eastern, their eastern property line, all those trees are within a conservation easement. So the residents there shouldn't be removing any trees from their yards within those boundaries. I, they can add trees to it and remove dead trees or fallen trees, noxious weeds, things like that. I know most of the trees are deciduous, and the buffering proposed, I think the recommendation from the residents, and I believe what they were proposing, the applicant themselves are proposing, are all coniferous trees or shrubs. That should provide year-round buffering. Green giant arborvitae do get 14, 15 feet tall, which should provide satisfactory buffering. I know they're gonna be planted at about four to five feet in height. So it may take some time, but that is normal.
Yeah. Okay. So we're gonna keep in the.
We'll keep in.
The modeling from the second story?
We can, I think in a discussion with them.
Well, they provided that.
The other thing they suggested they could provide to us or do, it would be with each of the landowner's permissions, was they suggested they'd be willing to fly balloons at eight feet.
Right.
Along the property for a period of time. So the residents would be able to gain some level of this is what the height will be and the visibility will be, and then obviously removing the balloons.
I think we asked, they were gonna provide more information on the fencing type.
Yes, on the, on the, what an agricultural fence is.
Yeah, and Jim, I think what you're, you're concerned, you just want to make sure that whatever we're asking them to do is what, what can be reasonably expected of.
Yeah, you know, I know you guys got more work in the office than you can stand, but I, I would love to see what other neighboring communities are settling on for a minimum level of buffering, fences, you know, vegetation species, height, spacing, staggering, you know.
Yeah.
It would be great to be able to, to say to the, the public that, you know, we, we polled some of the, you know, neighboring communities and, you know, this seems to be kind of a.
What's Webster do, what's Parentin do, Pittsburgh?
This seems to be a reasonable compromise that.
Yeah.
You know, three, four years down the road, it's gonna fill in and, you know, the fences that they're allowing are, you know, reasonable to look at and don't distract from the community and whatever.
Okay, we could do that. We could pile it.
Sorry, Matt, I think, I just.
Guess what you're doing. Dog road trip. All right, any other things that we wanna add to this resolution?
So that's what I had. I don't think I had anything substantially different on the Harris Road. I mean, I'll make the same changes to strike the similar conditions. There was no wetlands on that property. And I did wanna clarify for the board, it was brought up, the open space plan was brought up. So the original open space plan in the town was done in 2001, 2002. There was a list of properties generated. Not all properties were pursued. Some owners were not interested. This property was not under consideration during the 2002 open space plan. The town did move forward with some of those properties and the, and we sort of started a second phase in 2006, building off of that original list, since a number of them had been removed. They did a new site consideration in the, the community for other parcels suitable for consideration. They did a ranking, I believe in the 2006 one, they ranked 35 properties. This was not one of them. At the end, they did include essentially, call it an honorable mention, I think we called it other considerations in the actual plan. This property was identified under the other considerations, mostly to state that it wasn't suitable for most of the open spaces purpose, open space purposes we were looking at at the time. Specifically, we had, I believe, three categories we were looking at, whether it was expansion to parks, new parks, or either public or quasi-public partnerships, you know, something like land trust, school districts. This wasn't identified as usable for any of those, and it was identified as being poor for recreational uses just given its distance off of the road and general layout and topography.
Okay.
So I just wanted to provide that context on that particular site.
That would be helpful information to share with the interested parties that participate in.
Yeah, in the hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder if that's something that we should add, like to the website or something, a little memo.
Yeah, I mean, I can.
Describing that.
Go through, just 'cause it was so isolated, there really wasn't any, yeah. Contain some identified bird habitat, lands primarily meadow with limited access to Harris Road, sandwiched between homes, public water is available, but there's no sewers. The initiative could involve private funding or seeking grants for implementation for an easement to curtail the potential development, but the land's not desirable for recreational or public access. Was there a blur, but I can see if we can add that to the project description or into the.
Right. Right. Okay. Are there any other specific things with this one from a tabling resolution standpoint that are different that we need to consider?
They're very similar. You know, in this case, it would be looking at, you know, I just added the, you know, sort of the north and western boundary, since there's residents on both sides. From my understanding, they did have a conversation with some of the property owners on the north side. So, I don't think there is anything else specific to the site. They were very similar.
Okay.
Specifically with this one as well, we did start the lead agency process. Letters have been sent out to involved agencies. They have 30 days. We did date it based on the public hearing and the board's declaration to seek lead agency.
So, July 11th?
It would be July 12th, which is after our July meeting. So...
We will declare lead agency until August.
We'll declare lead agency in August, which would be the soonest we could take action pursuant to seeking. And at this point, I've only received feedback from Monroe County Planning and Development. They basically said they're gonna provide their letter shortly. They expect to have it before the July meeting.
Okay.
But they reserve their right to submit it after.
All right. Everybody have any other comments on these?
Is there any real main benefits to the, our community on Pennfield if we started, you know, getting more of these things in town? You know, I don't, I just don't understand.
See, that probably depends on who you talk to.
I know, yeah. It's, I just, I mean, would this help like the project, you know, on Route 250, Arbers? I mean, because they're having problems with R G N E. So, is this something that could help them down the road or is this just...
Something that may be a discussion for, not this board, but ultimately the town board, is there's, and I'm not super familiar with it. I'm gonna ask them to provide some more information, is there's like a host community, host community benefit agreement where there's, as they discussed during the meeting, there's some possibility they could, you know, sort of earmark the power for Pennfield or, you know, there may be other considerations they can do to localize what they're doing. So, it specifically benefits Pennfield more. So, I was gonna see if they could provide more information on that. But ultimately, any agreement like that would have to be formalized by the town board.
Yeah. I can tell you that some of the communities that we've worked with, not only do they earmark some of the reduction in electrical cost to certain entities, certain parcels, but they also provide other benefits to the community. So, it might be in the way of, you know, providing funds to the, you know, Parks Department or...
It's, you know, it's good to know. I mean, it's, you know, are they doing it though? I mean, like, so now, you know, we got three, we're gonna get two more. Okay. I mean, to me, I think the community would like, you know, to know that would be a benefit, some benefit.
Absolutely. No.
And that's, and we'll be requesting that information to see. And then ultimately, if that goes to the town board or if there's a discussion, that goes to the town board. I'll keep this board informed.
Yeah, that's a good point, Terry, because otherwise...
Wayne County?
I'm not excited to see those, but, you know, they're legal. So...
Okay. Thank you.
If we can get a benefit out of it, we should get whatever benefits we can.
At least the existing three provide a public benefit because they're either utility or municipal. So, they're providing for the communities.
The existing ones?
The existing ones.
Yeah.
So, when, when all of these were regulated under Article 10, that was one of the parts of the application. Now that they're handled through ORS, that's gone away. So, ORS, ORS attempted to get rid of the Article 10 board that was deemed to be arduous and lengthy and costly to these developers. And, you know, they were looking to streamline the approval process to get more solar farms online quicker to meet the governor's 2030 goals, all of that stuff. But there's, there's certainly a lot of history for community solar, private community solar projects for the public benefit side.
All right. So, we need a motion to approve and send these letters?
Yeah.
We'll do them as a tabling resolution, continuing tabling resolution.
Oh, yeah, right. Okay, so.
The motion for...
Northrop Road?
I was only on Northrop.
Do one for each one and get a continued table?
So, we got a second for Northrop?
I'll second that one. I'll make the motion on Harris to table that.
I'll second that one.
All right. So, let's vote on the Northrop first.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding's aye.
Okay, so we also have this motion to continue table and send the tabling resolution on the Harris Road application.
Correct. Tiding's.
Correct.
Tiding's did the motion.
I'll second.
So, Hetzke?
Do you want to second? Yeah. You do it again?
Kenauer had done it, but Burton is trying to usurp his second, so he gets his name in the minutes anymore.
So, Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding's aye.
Okay.
All the business the board has.
All right. With that, we will stand adjourned. Everybody enjoy Independence Day. Go to the parade.
Are you writing in convertible?
Got the active transportation.
I got a, I got a wedding to go to.